The meeting, apologies for the start of this morning. With that, I think the purpose and intent of tonight's work session is really to have, Sarah's going to kind of go here, but kind of give the council a very holistic approach about what all of the input has been thus far, some of the engagement done, the results of that engagement are, and then perhaps most important, as part of this 2040 process, get into the vision, the values, and the goals. I think first, the council will have to see after what this framework may look like. So, pretty exciting. A friendly reminder about the project that I prepared, just started, oh yeah, Chris, we're good, we're good, almost a year ago, been a lot of community engagement. We're not at the finish line, but we're getting, and so really what that finish line looks like is the vision, I use statement, goals, objectives, really kind of a framework for the next 15 years. So, that, I don't know, and we have an hour and a half.
Should I use the mic?
Perfect, okay. Well, we're really, I'm excited to share with you tonight, just on behalf of my team at SSW, we have done so much engagement and really enjoyed working with the Forest Grove community and the steering committee and staff, and it's, we're to a really important part in this process. And so, yes, tonight's purpose is to get your input on the vision and the values and then to highlight for you the framework. You'll have another meeting that's coming up in Ju-, on June 23rd, where we'll dig deeper into, you'll see the goals and the outcomes tonight, that are also part of that framework, but we'll just know that that will be an opportunity to dive deeper on the goals, the outcomes, and the specific actions. All right, so if we could go ahead and just move to this first, I'm going to need to zoom out a little bit, and then if we could just go back one slide. So, tonight, I'll take you through the overview, just for anybody who's listening or in the audience tonight, maybe they haven't been involved in this project, so I know that might be a little redundant for council, but we'll talk about this project, its purpose. The community engagement will highlight some themes from the outreach, which some of this you saw at your council retreat, but again, we want to make sure the context is fresh for you so that you can see the, the journey we've been on as we've arrived at this draft vision and values, and then, and then we'll, we'll dive into the draft and talk about the next steps. Go ahead to the next slide and just to the next one. So, what is Forest Grove Forward? It is the community visioning project where it's really a community engagement project, and we're looking at what are the community's aspirations? How do we build that into a, a vision for the next 20 years that will guide the city's strategic planning and decision-making efforts? And this is really an opportunity to hear from your community, community about how they want it to look, feel, and function into the future. Next slide. So, what the, what the vision includes is you'll have a vision statement, the shared vision, that describes what they want Forest Grove to be in 2040, a set of community values that describes what's important to people and what should guide us in implementing that vision, and then an action plan that has specific goals that describe what those future conditions are for the community, and then, most importantly, the kind of how, the how-to plan, the actions that say how the goals will get achieved, whether those are actions that are guided by the city or maybe potentially community partners. Next slide, why having a community and, a community vision is important. I think as we've gone through the engagement process, this has just come to light more and more. Communities are complex, and many of your challenges are really interconnected, and so things that people believe improve downtown are also good for pedestrian connectivity and create inviting spaces for a community to connect and gather. So, we heard a lot of things across, we had the, the vision labs recently that were based on certain topics, but some of the same things kept coming up over and over again because they translate in, in many of these goal areas. Another example of that is improvements to community and, community parks and enhanced recreation programming can also benefit community health and well-being and create opportunities for connection. And then another example would be like investments in community infrastructure also support the expansion of, of housing in your community. So, there's a lot of intersection, and being able to have these broad conversations about how the commu-, about the community and how people want it to look, feel, and function over 20 years, gives you an opportunity to chart a plan that will help the city council, the organization, and other community partners be able to work together to really achieve that vision that the communities express that they want. Next slide, so where are we in the process? We are kind of in between this vision development piece and the action planning. So, all along the way, at every phase of this project, there have been engagement opportunities. We're currently wrapping up phase four with bringing you this draft vision and values, and, and then we're already through part of phase five because we did our vision labs last month, and, and we're working on reviewing and refining all those comments before we get, get ready to put it out for public review with the draft plan. So, we just want to express our appreciation of everybody's involvement in this process to date, and we hope that you'll see your ideas reflected here in what's being shared tonight. What we'll have following this process, we'll talk about the details of the next steps, but we'll be putting together the draft plan and getting that ready for community review and then bringing it back to the council to adopt in July, with implementation and of course, celebration on, on the horizon, not far away. So, next slide, just kind of highlights those timelines. One thing I will say about the project schedule, as we got into the engagement piece of it, we did extend that piece. So, again, just thinking about all of the engagement that was conducted, we evaluated along the way and realized that there were, there were groups that needed more time to engage or that needed different tools or techniques, and so that was, it was nice to have the support of the organization and the council to be able to pause and, and figure out how do we shift gears a little bit to make sure that everybody's represented in, in this visioning process. So, looking forward to getting it to you guys in July for, for that adoption. Next slide. So, again, some of this may be a little redundant from council retreat, but we just wanted to make sure that you could see the trajectory of how we got to the drafts we're going to show you tonight. And anybody else who's listening or seeing this for the first time can see how comprehensive the engagement has been. So, next slide. This chart, I don't expect you to be able to read all of that, that text there, but this chart just represents how we engaged people in Forest Grove, and it was a mixture of things, so in-person, online, and then other opportunities. And, and again, as I mentioned, we evaluated the results of these engagement opportunities all along the way. So, you'll see the in-person opportunities included all sorts of community events, working with the business community. We did a partnership with Veritas that helped do targeted outreach within the Latino community, and lots of youth engagement. We worked with the steering committee, the Rotary Club, and the other category, there were lots of print materials and things that went out. You may have seen something in your utility bills. We did some interviews with folks across the community. And then online, lots of folks took the survey, we had lots of social media content circulating, there were things all over the website, the e-newsletter, so we took advantage of a lot of those opportunities as well. Next slide. As far as who we heard from, in a sense, everyone, and the list reflects some broad outreach that's reflective of the demographics in your community, and maybe every single person didn't participate, but there were, all of the groups are represented here, all of the different segments of community groups participated in some capacity. So, from community groups, community leaders, folks at, at community meetings, the survey respondents, at thousands of people at the events, lots of people online, intercept surveys, businesses visited, multifamily, like housing complexes and senior facilities that we visited, Pacific University, reaching out to youth, whether at meetings or at the high school or at the university, it was, it was really very broad. Next slide. Just go ahead and shift to the next one. So, we asked people, oh, next slide, we asked people what should we preserve into the future and what people love about Forest Grove? And if you'll go ahead and shift to the next slide, you'll see, sorry, next slide. You'll see some of these, these words jumping out in our word cloud here. People really love the small-town feel, that piece about connection, and you'll see this showing up in the vision statement, and we heard it through and through in the vision labs, like people, it's not, sometimes the word "small-town" brings negative connotations for people, but when you ask what that means to them, it's about knowing your neighbors and feeling a sense of connection in the community, and that, I think, was the thing that stood out the most. That was really, really important to people across all of the different groups that we engaged with, that was one of the themes that rose to the very top. Next slide, and you'll see that is reflected here, this is just a snapshot from the survey data, but when we asked people what are the top three reasons why you live, work, learn, play, or visit in Forest Grove, I'm sorry, this is survey data and from the events, this, this chart represents that small-town atmosphere, again, comes all the way to the top, followed by the rural setting and feeling safe, and again, family and friends, so the connection is, is super important to people here in town. Next slide. Some of the vision themes from the community survey and the, and the events, again, so preserving the warmth, the charm, that's unique identity, not wanting to just be a Portland suburb, thoughtful growth, the preservation of the natural environment and the historic character, being family-friendly, having a vibrant downtown, bike-friendly and walkable, safe, lots of community events and opportunities, again, to connect, such a major theme. When we asked folks at the, with, when we did the targeted outreach with Veritas and with youth, again, all of these themes are consistent. Folks have slightly different ways of wording it, but again, the, the connection piece, the small-town feel, that was really, safety, those were acts of the natural beauty, if you, as you see on the bottom, again, the, the themes were consistent over and over again. And then the last one here, you go to the next slide, the themes from business outreach. While they had a slightly different slant on it towards and perspective, they also had similar themes. So, you'll see more things like tourism and, and access to downtown, but it is about support and connection and being in communication with the city and the community, so all of that was important to them as well. Yes, go ahead.
Quick question. So, in this question with the desired state of the next 15 years, these are some of the major themes that came out. In the previous one, you had some percentages for like, some of the responses, did you have similar for these? Or was this just crazier?
No, this was, this was after, so one of the adjustments that we made after we did the initial outreach, there were a few areas where we felt like the response rates were light, and that was with the Latino community, so that's why that separated out, and then with the business community, so the, and then with youth. Those were all the areas where we did additional outreach, and so we had them grouped separately. But again, there, we felt like there was still consistency across what we were hearing.
So, a lot of what you saw about, you love about Forest Grove was the same as what they wanted the desired state to be in the next 15 years.
Yes, yeah. All right, and so I just wanted to kind of reframe that for you and make sure that that was fresh in your mind, so that as you see these draft statements, you're hopefully going to see a lot of those words in that sentiment reflected here. So, next slide. First, before we get started, I just want, I want you guys, I want to take you through some definitions, and then also just express a few words of guidance as you think about these statements. So, everybody's first inclination is to want to just wordsmith the heck out of a vision statement, and we have done that many times with, as we've been in the vision labs, as we've worked with the steering committee, I mean, we filled pages upon pages upon pages of feedback and then tried to distill that down again and again and again. And so, just to give you an idea of how the plan is structured, so the vision statement is the community's desired future state, and some of the attributes of a vision statement, so again, we looked at lots of different community plans to see how different cities have framed these for their community, and, you know, is it, is it a short statement? Is it a paragraph? Is it a couple sentences? Some, you see a lot of variation in how they use them. But when you think about the vision itself, it should be, it should be aspirational, it should be clear and concise, future-oriented, so we read a lot of statements that said like, in 2030, our community is, in 2040, our community is, so making sure that, that had some reference to the future. Inclusive, inspiring, values-based, and something that can serve as a North Star. When you look at the value statements, those are what guide the decisions and the behaviors and create the culture of a community or an organization, and they serve as the compass in implementing really what will be the goals and the actions and making the vision come to life. So, when you think about values, think about those as a lens, they need to be able to apply to everything. If you are tasking the city with implementing something, or maybe it's a partner organization, whatever that action is, they should be able to say, these are the values that are going to guide my implementation of this, and it should feel applicable. Okay, so, as far as what values, what you want them to be, you want it to be clear and understandable, we don't want to get too fancy in our, our language, and we want to make sure that somebody, you know, at like a fifth-grade reading level could understand what it is we're trying to say. We want them to be actionable, enduring, we want those to be shared, so hopefully there, you feel like the spirit of what I've shared with you and from the engagement, it shows up in those values and in alignment with the vision. All right, so first, starting with the draft vision, I just want to, again, highlight for you that this is, we're seeking your feedback, but we also are trying to honor the input that the community has given in this process, so as we think about anything we want to modify about this, we want to make sure we stay within that, the spirit of what we also heard from the community. So, how it's structured is first, kind of this short concise piece that hopefully can be memorable, but then also the second part, there was a lot of passion expressed from the groups that we met with as far as like, well, you have to explain what that means, and there's a lot of things that need to be included in this. So, that was kind of the compromise of short statement, then with this, a little bit of explanation behind it. So, the draft vision is rooted in connection and growing with purpose. And a little bit of background of the rooted, again, the connection piece, it felt really important to lead with that, but the rooted piece kind of has this nod to the agricultural roots and history of the community. And then growing with purpose was about, people in Forest Grove understand that maybe they want to preserve the, the charm and the small-town feel, but they understand that growth's happening, and they want it to be intentional and well-thought-out, and to be able to minimize the impacts on, on that connection piece, like, don't let growth happen in a way that's going to erase that small-town feel and that ability for us to connect as a community. So, and then the, the remainder of the statement, "In 2040, Forest Grove serves as a gateway to Oregon's rural tranquility and urban innovation, situated between mountains and metropolis, where a destination with a vibrant downtown and local economy, where independent businesses thrive, education inspires and provides opportunity, recreation amenities abound, and neighbors truly connect. Through thoughtful, sustainable growth and collaborative spirit, we cultivate a high-quality, safe, and affordable life, honoring our history and welcoming all who visit and call Forest Grove home." So, I'm going to get, I'm going to take us through the, like, the vision statement and the value statement, so you can see how they intersect, and then we can pause there before we get into the goals and the outcomes and, and gather up some feedback. Does that sound okay? All right, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So, the draft values, these were things that we extracted, like, not only did they come up as part of the conversation about what people want to see for the future, but they kept coming up in the vision labs, is like, these are the words that we kept hearing over and over again, and, and within the vision labs, those were where we were having like discussions about specific goal areas, and so it felt like these three themes kept emerging, and they applied to every single goal. So, that was where to us it made sense, like, this is, these are, these aren't necessarily goals in and of themselves, these are the values that should guide the implementation of everything. And so, sustainable, safe, and connected was where we landed for the draft values, and sustainable meaning, together we strive towards a sustainable future, where our commitment to environmental care, responsible financial choices, thoughtful community growth, and resilient infrastructure ensures a thriving, inclusive city for generations to come. Safe is we aspire to be a community where everyone feels secure, supported, and prepared, where public safety is a shared priority, health is nurtured, and we stand resilient in the face of emergencies, united in our care for one another. And then connected, we envision a deeply connected community where neighbors know and care for one another, where inclusive engagement thrives, and where thoughtfully designed spaces and infrastructure bring people together, preserving a small-town spirit as we grow. So, let's just pause there, maybe we flip back to the vision statement for a moment, and I'm just curious what the council's reaction. Anything missing or any questions about how we arrived here?
Just the, I didn't want to bat, I didn't want to batter your ground, sorry.
Testing.
I think it's, I think it's beautiful, and it's very clear that a lot of work has already gone into it before it got to us, because I wouldn't change a word.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Brett, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Sarah, for all the work that you have done for bringing us here. I think it's, it's ours, it's uplifting, and we are, we all feel very proud of, you know, what we can see and dream about the future for our town. The question that I had, but we're already here, but these are, again, you know, questions that I have. Do you happen to have the responses? I would like, you know, somehow know the priorities for the youth, what was important to them, what was, were the most important, you know, or the priorities for our seniors and for our Latinos. I don't know if you have that information, like, separated by demographics, or just, it would just be interesting to know.
I can tell you, we can get more specific data, but I can tell you just kind of off the cuff, the, what we heard from the Latino community, kind of what you saw in that slide from Veritas, it was really, there weren't a lot of different themes. I don't feel like we heard anything different, it was about, you know, maintaining the small-town feel, cleanliness, parks, job opportunities, affordable housing, and then safety were some of the big theme, themes that came up there, and we can probably get, we have that full report from Veritas that we can provide as well as the breakdown of the survey data.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and as far as youth, I will say, they want things to do, they want more opportunities for shopping, yeah, more opportunities for shopping, and more places to eat, they had like a lot of specific requests for specific chain restaurants that they'd like to see in town, so there are, there are some elements where we are, some of the data where we could segment it like that, and it's not, and it's not all through the survey, but in your, some, we'll put together a full outreach summary, and we will be able to provide that.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, having spent my time at nearly all of the, the vision labs, the, the statement, the vision statement absolutely reflects all the input. You know, I wasn't around for the early stages of the survey work, but at least for the labs, it absolutely reflects it. They, you know, in terms of, you know, being able to, you know, speak to it, to the community, having a very short, succinct, memorable statement, you know, up, say, up to 10 words, is helpful to rally people around. I think this is a great explanatory vision statement. I, I would welcome some help with, you know, crystallizing a, a shorter statement that just serves as the umbrella, and I think a good example is just the, the last two lines, you know, a, a high-quality, safe, affordable life, affordable life, honoring our history. You know, that, that line there is, is more memorable, just in terms of getting, rallying people to it, and then, and then having that full statement on our, on our website or collateral is explanatory to it.
Can I, yeah, I have a clarifying question, too. I guess, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Falconer.
I wonder.
Well, I was just wondering, I wasn't exactly following what you were saying, it's just, because I feel like this is pretty short, and I think there needs to be accountability of some specific threads that came. What I see in this vision statement, and the reason I, and I think it works, is because it's, it weaves in those intentions, desires, and, you know, that, what we want to attain, right, that, like, it's a vision statement, so if we, I under, I think that's, I like, you know, the slogan, I like the 10-word, and then I think having that descriptive of, through these means, this is how we're going to get, like, these are our priorities. So, I guess, I guess my clarifying question is, did you want a, not a paragraph, just a sentence?
I don't, I don't think we're disagreeing at all. I, I said, I said this is a great explanatory statement to, of the vision, the, I'm just looking for, you say, a 10-word statement that I, I can, is easily memorable, that I can just rattle off as I'm, you know, persuading people to engage in this. So, it's, it's both and, is the short answer.
Is the, I, I guess I'm just, I'm wondering, Counselor Shemel, the rooted in connection growing in purpose, I think that's what that is, and so do you want four more words, so it's 10?
Okay.
Like, is there something missing?
Was that the intention? No, I don't know, that wasn't mentioned, so.
Because, okay, that, that's like. So, then the question is what's missing from that in your perspective is mine, because I think the rooted in connection is what you're, but then maybe there, maybe you don't, maybe it's resonating because there's something.
Yeah, well, just, just from my time with vision statements, an example of one that really is, brings clarity to me is the Meals on Wheels vision statement, which is, no senior will grow, no senior will go hungry or experience social isolation. That's, that's a, that's a clear aspiration, it has a clear end, you know, what, when you've accomplished the vision, what, what it, what the end looks like. So, that, I guess, maybe that's what, maybe I, that first statement didn't resonate because it, there's, there's not a closure on it, but, but I, I think the, the structure of what you've got up here, I absolutely agree with.
Okay.
I like Counselor Shemel's idea, though, something, wow, this is really loud, something short and memorable, you know, succinct, and it really grabs your attention, almost like a jingle line, and, and that as well. But I like, I like that idea of having something that's short and to the point.
Can we, can we move to the value statement?
Sure.
Is that, are we done with the vision statement, or are there any?
Well, I just want to, I just want to make sure I have clarity, so we're going to, you guys like the, the line here at the beginning, and then maybe we lead this explanation with a, a different sentence, kind of something short that is memorable and kind of a riff off of maybe this last piece, lead with that.
Because I really do like that, oh, we can't dig it up, well, that was.
So, just say, yeah, so you like it like this.
I like it like this, and I think the rooted in connection growing with purpose is very explanatory. explanatory and an overall good statement. Okay, Counselor Marshall, I'm seeing here head nods that this is good to go. So we're gonna move on.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, value statements.
Oh, back one. There you go.
So I had a question. When, I guess it's not really a question, more of like a thought process, but we have our values, right? Like, the city council has the values and our goals and objectives. And so do we see these just replacing those values? And, you know, and I guess, you know, and I'm thinking like the four, like fiscal stewardship, trying to like, right, diversity, equity, inclusion. So I feel, I like, when I read the packet on Saturday, I was like, okay, well, these easily, I feel like these easily go into what we have. And they're just worded in more of a, a community driven, like, it takes, it's more of like, this is who we are, it's the whole community, instead of the council saying, this is how we're going to make policy. You know what I mean? So I like this.
So I.
It's a long way of me saying.
Does it replace it?
Yeah. And I think it does. And I think it does a really good job.
It can. Different cities handle it different ways. So it, I mean, that's kind of up to the council. For example, your neighbors in Hillsborough, they have their community, their community vision is their 2035 plan. But then the council has their, their guiding principles, which are like their values that, that guide that specific body and how they make decisions. So, again, it can.
Jesse.
Is this working?
No.
Is it working now?
I think so.
Maybe it is. I don't know.
Just to clarify what the mayor was mentioning, the four values are financial stewardship, community engagement, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and strategic planning.
Just for context.
So I think all of those are in these values. Like, when I, and I think it's like, I don't know what the word I want to use, but I feel like this is easier to understand, and it's accountable, and it has a nice umbrella to it that, so I really like these. Any additional comments on the values?
Do you guys feel like anything's missing from this list? Hearing your council values, again, there is actually nice alignment. I didn't look at those when I was drafting these, but we were focused on like what we were hearing from the community, but it does align with what you have.
Yeah. Any additional comments? Okay. So we can, we can move forward.
You guys are good moving forward with these?
Are we good moving forward?
Yeah.
I am. I'm like, a thumbs up.
Let's, let's shift and talk a little bit about the goals and the outcomes and the actions. So just from a framework perspective, again, I want you to just keep in mind, goals, outcomes, and action, there's actions, there's a lot of interconnectivity across the various categories. As we worked through the vision labs, those topics kept coming up in multiple lab conversations, but we are assigning it to one goal area. And the reason being, it provides clarity as you're organizing the document and the ideas and the plan. And then from a reporting perspective, in the future, it makes reporting a lot easier. But just know that, like, could we have put connect to, like, there was one that came up very often, it was around, like, pedestrian, pedestrian walkways, and making, creating a more walkable community, a safe, walkable community. That came up in, like, healthy, active community. That came up in economy. It came up in, yeah, all of the different categories, infrastructure, you name it. I don't think we went through one session where we didn't hear something about public safety, or like trail and sidewalk connectivity. So we had to pick a place for that to live. So just know, as we're working through these, if you don't see an outcome yet in a goal area, it's probably because we assigned it to another one. And I want to share these with you now. We're not, they're not completely done. But I want you to see how they intersect with the vision and the values. And then just knowing that on June 23rd, that's when we're going to dive a little bit deeper into the, the goals, the outcomes, and the actions. So there's five proposed goal areas, and each area will have a goal statement. And we'll draft that after we see everything that's in the goal area to make sure that the statement truly summarizes what that area, what that area is. And then it'll be followed by outcomes that describe a specific result that the vision's aiming to achieve. So those will be the targets. And then under each outcome will be a list of actions. And those are the specific, more tactical things that will help to advance each of those outcomes. So just know that that's how it's going to be structured. So first, if we want to go ahead and go to the next slide, the first goal area here is economy. And these draft outcomes, these were, we presented all of the data into the vision labs, to the economy vision lab, and they helped us work through and propose these draft outcomes. And so first one, attract higher-paying job opportunities. That was something important we heard throughout the outreach. The next one here is connect, a more connected business community. Revitalize downtown, foster a community identity and sense of place, and support access to high-quality education for all. Education was one, again, that came up in a couple different areas. That one also came up in community growth, in the context of a lot of folks were in the engagement were saying, well, we need to make sure that our facilities are growing alongside our community. Well, as, we were fortunate to have somebody from the school district on our steering committee, as well as in the participating in the vision labs. And what they shared, in the vision labs, we wanted to have some subject matter experts in the room to make sure that as we're crafting outcomes and thinking about specific actions, that we're in alignment with what kind of, kinds of data and reports already exist. Like, what do we know about education and Forest Grove? So one of the things we heard was that they, there are a lot of studies that have been done, and they've been doing, the school district's been doing forecasting, and enrollment's actually going the opposite direction. And so it's not so much about expanding the facilities, as it is maybe about the opportunities and the quality of education as like, and a pipeline to employment. So that's why this one's, we chose to put it in economy, because it's really related to like, how are we developing a future workforce for our, for the Forest Grove community and for the region? How are we equipping our community with the skills they need to have high-paying jobs, whether it's here or somewhere else in the region? Questions about economy? Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. So, Sarah, I'm just curious, you mentioned that you have these goal areas, there's five of them, then you have draft outcomes under each goal area, and then the actions will be implementing essentially the outcomes. How many actions do you normally have per outcome, like two to three, or I'm just kind of curious?
It can vary. So the next step, we'll be taking all of the, the actions that were proposed in the vision labs, and working and refining, working through those and refining those with staff. So we have a workshop scheduled in a couple weeks with them to kind of get that better organized. And then also looking at, every action needs to have a partner in order to move it forward. And so making sure that as we draft, as we draft specific things, if there's something that's related to the school district that they would need to implement, we need them to at least give us some agreement. You can put a more formal agreement in place later, after the plans adopt it, but we need to give them a heads up of this is how we're structuring it in the plan, and you would be the lead partner on this, and make sure that there's support for that. That, again, is why it was important to have some of those people in the vision labs, because they were the ones who helped propose the action. So they shouldn't be surprised or blindsided in any way. But to, to your question, it's going to vary. Some, some outcomes may have like two or three, and there may be another one that has like eight, just depending on what the, what the topic is. We also try to capture when we were going through the vision labs, and, and those other partners were present, we asked about, well, what are some of the other things that are currently underway? TriMet, or, you know, Washington County, what are, what are you having the works that might impact Forest Grove that makes sense under these outcomes? Like, there's work that's been, that's projected and is planned for these organizations. And so we're also taking that into consideration as we design those actions. So we don't get down the road, and, you know, you guys are maybe building a new police station, and it's not in the community vision, like, how did, how did that get, why are we doing something that's well outside the community vision? So trying to account for some of those types of things, so people can see how they contribute to the outcomes that they care about.
Counselor Shimmel.
Yeah. Well, just along those lines, I'm curious about the, the process for making those determinations that will resemble the, the process of our goals and objectives, where we, you know, we've, we collectively did that, and then handed it to Jesse to work, distribute with staff. Given that this vision involves a more broad community-wide, do, do we weigh in on who those partners are? Because it's, you know, it may involve the money, where how money gets distributed, or what contracts we, we establish? I mean, what's your thoughts? I don't know if it's, how much of it is the consultant versus city manager?
I was, that's partly the reason I asked the question, was kind of reconciling how this and how the city council's annual goals and objectives, what that nexus is. How do they either go together? How do they complement one another from a budgeting perspective, from a priority perspective? The only kind of two things that, that come to mind is this is a 15-year plan. This is an aspirational plan that goes out much longer than the annual council goals and objectives, which is typically limited one to, one to three years. And so those are the kind of only two context points I have at this point. But I would think, kind of getting back to one of Sarah's earlier comments, you would think that both of those would be complementary documents and not contradictory documents, if that makes sense, that there wouldn't be something that's in direct contradiction to the 2040 plan, that would be in an annual goal and objective, if that, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Distribution of work, then align, I know that alignment is, is probably going to be good. It's just.
I guess, Sarah, will it have timeframes for some of these, or is it, or no, kind of, it'd be probably hard to do that for.
Not, not initially for, not initially for the adoption. And, but going forward, after the lead partners are all in place, you have to work with them, too, to see, the city can't necessarily dictate and say, hey, school district, you have to do this in the one-to, one-to-two-year timeframe, like, those things, those things will unfold over time. So I think when you see your first report of where the actions are, and the agreements are in place with the partners, the city being one of those partners. So how we've seen it happen in other places is that you have the, the visions adopted, and the first year, the council does their goal setting. And following an adoption of a vision, they're usually looking at things in the vision, elevating those to their council priorities. And then that's kind of assigning the timeframe and identifying that it's being resourced.
So essentially, taking that, and then prioritizing and putting timeframes associated with that, not necessarily, so that the kind of council goal and objectives, per se, you'd essentially be kind of rebuilding that from the ground up, but using this document as a, as the framework for doing that, as opposed to the prior years document as a framework? Is that accurate?
Yeah. In 2020, we finished the City of Hermiston, their community vision. And the council ended up that next year, switching, shifting their goal-setting framework to align with the goals and the vision. And then, again, as I mentioned, they highlighting some, some of the priorities or some of the actions from the community vision. But there's always, there still are other things that come up that maybe, you know, the challenge of the day, contexts are always, community context is always shifting. That's why we always talk about it in goal setting. And so you still have to, you still have to be responsive. Maybe there's something that was maybe not in the vision that comes up that you need to deal with. So that might end up as a council objective. But does that help to?
Counselor Falconer.
When I think of, like, I mean, this is a city-led project, and it's a, you know, it's a city orchestrated, I mean, it's, it's a city document. And so I get a little, I get a little nervous when we start talking about, you know, require, you know, having the implementation of this be dependent on any future IGA, or contract, or our, you know, process that we would enter into with another agency, understanding that we, we all have to collaborate with those all the time. But I think, I would just maybe caution us to be very vague in our language. I think support access to high-quality education for all is an important goal for the city to have. What that means in implementation, I think, is, is not just, it's a, it's not just up to us. But this document has, I think, should focus on what the city can achieve if that partnership were to completely disintegrate for some reason. So I'll just leave that there.
Can I make a comment on that? So there was a lot of discussion, great, great, great comment, Counselor Falconer, there was a lot of kind of discussion about, is that something that's just listed there to reflect what the community input was, but not necessarily an actionable plan, because it's not, it's, we're not the school district. And the school district makes actionable plans for the school district. And so there's been a lot of discussion about how do you list it to try and reflect what some of the comment was, but at the same time, also recognize that you're absolutely right. We don't, we don't control the outcome on that. That's not within our governance. So I think we'll, we'll definitely look at trying to strike that balance to, to show what the community said, but at the same time, try to make it known that, that, that that's a different jurisdiction, if you will.
And sorry, my comment isn't to, isn't to suggest that there aren't, that there is nothing that the city can do to support an objective of supporting high, you know, access to high-quality education for all. One thing that it comes to mind specifically is safe routes to school program in our, in our transportation, you know, plan. Or, you know, I, I think, you know, I guess when I think about this thing, I think about what is the way that the city can set the stage, or the environment in which that is more likely to happen versus less likely to happen?
And that we have kind of, that we can contribute to actively.
So, Shimmel.
I know you, you alluded to the, the context to many of these, where, where education shows up in multiple groups. The, the context here is economy. And the discussion I remember from the, the vision lab was basically making employable kids. So connecting school with chamber and small businesses, where you, you built that bridge that didn't require a degree, you know, there's, you know, other, other trade type, type of skills development. And, and to your point about the, is, is there literal, a literal city role? It may not be. I think the, the fact that the statement is here is something that we can inspire the right organizations to do, you know, through our relationships, and our, the times that we meet with them, is encouraging the school district and the chamber or other groups to partner with each other to accomplish this. And both those, say, just as an example, that both those groups were present, and I think had understood the context of this particular statement.
So yes, I think, when we think about those, those outcomes that we want, I think the partnerships and communication is essential, you know. So we are just nodding our bubble, talking to ourselves, how wonderful this would be. You know, we need to do the outreach, we need to establish solid partnerships to be able to make these outcomes a reality.
Yeah, part of putting it in the plan is, creates a mechanism of accountability, saying that the council's working diligently to create those partnerships and cultivate that environment.
And we don't want just high-paying our employees. We want kids who want to be business owners.
Other comments on this particular goal area? Again, there'll be more, much more to discuss when you see all of, all of the specifics that go with it, but wanted to give you a preview. Let's shift to the next one. And this one is around community growth. So the three outcomes that resulted in this topic area, first, increase the supply of diverse and affordable housing options to meet current and future needs. Second one, improve major thoroughfares with balanced traffic management and safety enhancements, and improve public safety response in Forest Grove. And there's actions in there that relate to police, to fire, to emergency planning, just to kind of give you an idea of what's included in public safety. The other ones feel a little more self-explanatory. Any questions or comments about this particular area?
Counselor Shimmel.
Well, I think these are spot on. I'd be curious, with ones like public safety, very explicit to, or specific to the city, would, would city staff weigh in on the language? Like, when, when I talk to, you know, the police chief or fire chief, you know, there, there are metrics for. you know, there, there are metrics for what public safety response is. And so is it a maximizing what those metrics? Or what, what that mark is? I'm just throwing out example to the, or asking the question, do they weigh in on some of the language if it's specific to city?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah. The, I, the reason we do the workshop with staff and the refinement is to make sure that we're, the language is, makes sense to them. Because they're the ones that are charged with the implementation. And then you brought up metrics. So once the plans adopt it, they, they're responsible for kind of scoping these actions and figuring out, okay, what does it mean to implement this? And what are the metrics that will indicate success on this? And so as it comes for, as they start working on those things, it comes forward to council in a work session. That, that's something that we'll recommend as part of the implementation structure of like, when you scope these things and create a charter around this particular action, you should identify what those metrics will be and communicate that with the council to make sure that as, as time goes on, that you're, you're charging towards the right thing. Whoever the elected body is, does this indicate success to that particular council? And, and are we on the right, on the right path as we move some of these things forward? But to try to define all of those metrics now, because you don't know how this work is going to be prioritized and what the timelines are, it's just, it's a little bit too early. In some instances, you might be able to do that, but across the plan would, would be challenging.
Just in, in addition to that, excuse me. Staff's going to be having a meeting with the consulting team, I guess in a couple of weeks or something. And so we're going to go through a lot of the same things that the council is tonight. I think we wanted to wait and see, kind of have it unfiltered from the, from the consultant team to the council and then, and then staff will look at it and consider everything, of course, that the council is saying here as well. And then coming back for another work session in, in June. So, um, in response to your question, Counselor Shimmel, I, I think, um, yeah, the fire and police chief will take a look at it. And there might be a different way to kind of phrase it, but in terms of metrics, there definitely is some. It's just a matter of kind of how we list them in the plan.
Yeah, that's definitely a, we want to make sure everything's aligned and it's not, it's not consultant driven. It needs to make sense for Forest Grove and for the people who are actually going to be doing the work. Any other questions about community growth? All right. The next goal area is a healthy and active community. The outcomes here are increased recrea, increased recreation opportunities for all. Increased accessibility and safety for all recreation amenities. And improved health and wellbeing for all Forest Grove residents. And the improved health and wellbeing, that one also includes, um, there were a, a lot of things expressed and this came up in the community growth conversation of access to healthcare and clinics and facilities. So that was part of it. So you'll probably can anticipate seeing some language in there around like partnership, trying to, uh, establish partnerships and advocate for those types of things to be more readily available in Forest Grove. The other ones, um, it started, the draft outcome started as increased recreation opportunities for youth, but it was, it expanded beyond that. There are certainly some specific things that you'll see in the data around the youth engagement that people want to see for, um, for youth in the community. But there's lots of things across the board related to recreation that people want to see. And people are very passionate about recreation and Forest Grove, so. Any questions about any of these outcomes? All right. The next one, we could head to the next slide here, uh, infrastructure. So infrastructure, very foundational for all of your service delivery. So the first draft outcome is to build and maintain resilient, efficient and financially sustainable infrastructure. Enhance mobility and safety through thoughtful planning and design. And enhance walkability and community connectivity through pedestrian and bike friendly infrastructure and enhance transit options. So while it wasn't the number one engagement theme to make sure that toilets flush and, um, water is delivered. Infrastructure is really important and communities spend a lot of money on it. So it felt shortchanged to not include something about planning. People want, as you plan for growth, again, kind of getting back to the vision. They want to have, um, you know, they want increased housing opportunities and, and they want to have an affordable life. And in order to do that, you need to have well managed infrastructure. Otherwise you see rates skyrocket and things of those natures. So. Maybe not the, the hot ticket item, but important.
Sorry, I have another question. Um, was there any type of infrastructure that like came through was like roads, power, water?
I would say.
Or was it kind of across the board?
Roads were the ones we heard, like roads, sidewalks and like just again, the, the piece around walkability and community connectivity were popular items, like things that trended higher in the engagement data, because those are things that people interact with so readily. So we heard a lot about like safety concern, certain safety concerns and maybe in particular neighborhoods or, um, crosswalks. That's a big one. Um, and then just, we heard a lot about this decoupling the couplet downtown that, anyway, of changing the one-way streets in downtown. Because it's kind of, so you're not a pass through community. And how do you, how do you think about the traffic patterns to invite more people into your downtown and get people to want to stop? So, and then just getting across those areas from a, from a crossing perspective, um, we heard some in the engagement, like safety concerns to that effect. Maybe things you've heard before. I don't know. Uh, any questions about infrastructure? Okay. Next one, um, community connection. So the draft outcomes here, and, uh, so this one, I feel like you see it, this is an important one. You see it show up in the vision statement. You see it show up in the values and you also see it as its own goal area again, because we heard about it so frequently. So first outcome is inclusive and accessible spaces for people of all ages to gather and connect. So some people, to some people, maybe that's like a community center. To some people, it's in the downtown and how you, how you create that environment for people to shop and gather and like, you know, enjoy, enjoy a Friday night with friends or family as they go to a restaurant or connect in an outside community space or at an event or in an activity. The second one is increased engagement through community wide awareness of news and events. So this is, uh, this outcome almost feels a little tactical to me. It's like, how do we, how do you do a better job of getting people to, to read the content that the city is putting out or even that your partners might be putting out. And like, we heard things of like, how are we supposed to know about events across the community? Could there be some sort of community wide calendar? And maybe there is, but people don't have awareness of it, or it's just, it's not broadly embraced. So things like that. Um, and then the third one is active civic engagement and increased collaboration among community organizations, volunteers and the city. You guys have a lot of other, other groups in town that, um, are also trying to engage and how, how do you build connectivity amongst those service organizations or community organizations? Questions about this one? Comments?
Was there a particular theme of how people engage with the city currently? I know the communications team, Stephanie and Joyce have done a lot to kind of increase the avenues in which we communicate and also increase the communications themselves, whether it be by social media or email or website. Did you get any themes back about this is working or I'd like more over here or that? And if so, what, what that might've been?
We could go through the data and see, I can't remember if we looked at, I think we asked a question in the survey about how people currently engage. And so we could look at that. Um, some of the things that came up in the vision labs based on the outreach or, um, the local media presence and how do we, uh, how do, how can we explore partnerships with some of the, any local media? Other things, bringing back batter banners and encouraging utilizing like Forest Grove centric media. Increasing, um, technology tools to capture all events on social media. As I mentioned, that universal calendar thing. So. Yeah, yeah. Any other questions about this one? Okay. So those are the five goal areas. So you can see, you've seen the, the vision, you've seen the values and the goals and the outcomes. And next up, you'll see the actions, which is, which will be the specifics after we do that refinement with staff. Excuse me, if we could go to the next slide, actually two slides ahead, get the next step. There we go. So on May 21st, this is where we will work with the staff leadership team to refine the language of those actions and get everything prepared for a draft plan. And we'll bring that, you'll, the council will see that and, um, we'll do a quick update at your June 9th council meeting. To just, really it'll be an opportunity to highlight that we're getting ready to start the community review process. And, um, and we hope that the council as the, this, you know, the lead on this project that came from your council goals to help, uh, share that out with your networks. And to highlight that people should take a look, there's been a ton of engagement on this project and this is an opportunity to ask people, did we get it right? Here's the, you know, you've, you've shared a lot of your time and energy helping us build this plan. And, um, we want to make sure people feel heard in, in what they're seeing. And so the, at June 9th, that'll be the same day that we'll launch the community review process. And we'll do that in a variety of ways. And we look to the council to share any other ways that you think we should do it. But we're planning to be at your farmer's market to do some in-person, um, sharing and we'll have some boards up and people will be able to see it in, in that venue. We'll also have something available online on the city's website where people, people can read through it and share their comments electronically. And then we also have, um, the partnership still with Veritas and they'll be doing a, um, Spanish focus group. So again, utilizing their networks and their relationships with the Forest Grove Latino community to bring those folks together and take them through, a focus group to review the plan and make sure that their ideas feel represented there as well. So that's what we have planned thus far and, um, would love to hear any additional ideas or feedback the council has. Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's, um, we should run it through our boards and commissions as well. And we're even seeing if, I don't know if CCE has decided what their annual town meeting is going to be, but this could be a good community engagement quarterly forum for, for CCE to help us with. Those are my initial thoughts for engagement. Council President Valenzuela.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so you mentioned one focus group for the Latino community and a focus group usually should not at least include more than 12 people. So one, do you think will suffice? Or should there be an effort to?
We could do.
Because I know a lot of them go to the market. That is true. But one focus group of the eight to 12 people just seems like very, a very small number.
Yeah.
I think we could certainly ask Veritas what their recommendations are. The goal and the objective would be to make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for input from the Latino community. And so if it requires two, then it requires two. I think that'd be no problem.
And Veritas, uh, just to kind of give an overview of how that partnership works, they, they go out and, um, they find the interested parties in the community and the, it's through their relationships. And so they, they take, they basically tell us, thank you for the content and we will take it from here and then we'll let you know a year back. They are very like protective of those relationships to make sure that the engagement truly is authentic. And there's, yeah, we can ask them, uh, what their recommendations are on, on quantity and, um, add another one to the mix.
Yeah. I just wanted to acknowledge that CCC, or sorry, CCE has not selected a topic. I think generally they also get the input from the council. So if this were the, the appropriate topic, we can bring that up in there. I think the timing was October for the ATM. So, so the context of it could be, okay, we've adopted this. How does that look like in terms of, you know, broad communication or collective engagement? You know, CCE has also been rotating their folks around to other boards and commissions. So maybe we, we enlist their effort to inform and if some of this work may fall, fall into certain boards and commissions to help develop actions further. So, you know, maybe CCE could be a, a communication engine for that.
I was just wondering, maybe in, in June, in that timeframe, if we want to get some feedback from some of the boards and the commissions prior to council approval. We could look in that June timeframe. That could be potentially some engagement with CCE on some of the communication goals. Potentially with EDC on some of the economic goals. So I, I think if you give us an opportunity to kind of chat afterwards, I think we could kind of figure out how to weave this into some of the most impactful. You know, some of the most impactful outcomes and goal areas and how we weave that into the boards and commissions. So I think we can figure that out. Yeah.
So, um, after we complete that community review process, uh, really while, as it's nearing its end, we'll also connect again with the steering committee. We'll give them an update on what we've heard from the community at that point to date. And, um, see if they have any additional recommendations on, on the draft plan. And then it's, it'll be a quick turnaround, but we want to get it back to the council on the 23rd so that we can, we know that summer gets busy and you guys take a break. And so, um, we want to make sure we get it to you to review on the 23rd and we'll be able to share all that community feedback with you and any adjustments that we've made to the plan. And at that point, you'll also hear, while, when we meet with the staff, I should have mentioned this on May 21st. We'll also talk about the implementation structure and so what that looks like, the interaction with potential partners or other community organizations as we were kind of talking about earlier. And, um, and what is this going to look like after the plans adopt it? How does it, how does the implementation actually happen? So we'll also be talking with the council. We'll get some recommendations from staff on how this gets, um, memorialized and operationalized and, uh, and then be able to highlight that and share that with you on the 23rd to see if that feels right for Forest Grove before it comes to you for adoption. So that'll be another important topic that we'll talk through that evening. And then after the, we get the final, um, round of feedback from the council, the idea would be to bring it back to you for adoption in the 14th of July.
Is this, uh, the name of it, Forest Grove Forward? Is that the name of the vision plan moving forward? Yeah. I'm just wondering, because I'm trying to think of it, community engagement. And Anne Lane said something, that's our Parks and Rec, uh, director and she, you know, she mentioned community engagement that one of the things she's found working is that if you like, ask community for their input that you can deliver on. And so I'm just trying to figure out if we're doing it online, like we want people to look at this online. Are there things we can have them vote on or give input to where they can directly see like that their voice does matter? Because one of the things that I don't know if the rest of my colleagues here is like, well, why does it matter? And you all do what you want to do. And so I think that, you know, our comms team has done a really good job of like doing a, you know, community engagement, but there's still things we can do to try to bolster that community engagement. So I'm just wondering if, if there's anything within this plan that we say, hey, participate in it, and then you can directly see how your input is being used. I don't know if there's a way, but, and I'm just curious about the title. Like I'm like, well, is there a few names we want to choose? And then they could vote and then they could give us feedback. I'm just trying to look for ways for community members to buy in to understanding like that their voice does matter and that we're asking them for a reason, not just to check a box. So anyways, that's.
Two or three different titles of the plan itself. So one could be like the 2040 vision plan, or is that where, one could be Forest Grove Forward? Is that what you're suggesting here? Okay. I see. Yeah. Cause it's been called like quite a few different things. I mean, Stephanie's like, no, it's been called one thing the whole time. Uh, so it's just you calling it different things, Jess. Uh, so if there's something that particularly resonates with the council, I think, yeah, some way to engage the community. And so they feel as though they not only kind of see the input, I mean, have the meaning, meaningful input, but see the meaningful input, meaningful input as well. So.
I'm not saying that we should change the name. I was just looking for an example of like some sort of, something that is deliverable, that isn't a deal breaker, that says like, hey, and then they can, I just think just building that trust of voice matters.
Part of it after the plan gets. Part of it, after the plan gets adopted, it's, I mean, this is really an exercise in community engagement and bringing ideas in, but then to operationalize it is really an exercise in storytelling. It, it's about talking about how their, how the vision shows up at, at the council priority setting. It's talking about as something gets implemented, this was something that was born out of the community vision, because, and so it, it's constantly an exercise of communications and closing the loop for people and using whatever you're going to call it, if you're going to call it Forest Grove Forward, to cite it often and as frequently as you can, and to have your succinct statement, so that, that is like the rallying cry to say, we, we heard you. And it, it is something that you want your council and any future counselors to support and get behind, so that it's constantly part of that storytelling. So we'll call that out in the implementation structure and, and have those recommendations to, to support you as you get started, but that, it's, it's a really important piece of it.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Schimmel.
Well, just some accolades. You know, I mentioned to, to, for staff last time, but just want to reiterate for your team that, you know, my career experience with strategic planning, visioning, you know, this stands up to any of them, especially with the level of input and, and the broad input that you're able to accomplish, and just witnessing the, the vision labs and contribution by everyone present, and how inclusive you, you made it for everyone was, was commendable. So, well done. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have for you guys tonight, but I will see you again in just a few, not long, June 9th. And anyway, we're excited to get, get this piece of it wrapped up and get you off and running on your implementation, so.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Good job, thank you. I'm going to adjourn this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this city council meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. The time is 7:01, and will the city recorder please call, roll?
Counselor Gusterson?
Yes.
Counsel President Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Schimmel?
Here.
Counselor Falconer?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Twolten Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apaladi. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the council and the audience please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I'm just changing locations. So the next item on our agenda is my most favorite thing to do. Some of you in this room know that my first and favorite job is to be a teacher. And it's my students who encourage me to do this role as a city councilor and as mayor. So annually, the Oregon Mayors Association hosts an If I Were Mayor contest, and there's different categories, a poster category for elementary, essay for middle school, and then a digital entry for high school. So we are going to announce the winners of the If I Were Mayor contest. For brevity purpose, I just want to say that, I want to say a whole lot, but I'm going to try to keep it short. The applicants and winners of this contest reflect who we are as a community, who treats each other with respect, who's inclusive, who's accessible, and who thinks for the well-being of all people while respecting individual differences. And so with that, I'm going to start with our middle school level, which is the essay contest, and the winner receives $100 from the city of Forest Grove and will be entered into the state's contest. Hang on, I have to grab my award. Okay, so, and I'm going to ask that when I say your name, you come up so we can, I think the city manager will snap a photo, or maybe not. He's not really good at it, so I'm like kind of apprehensive now to ask him. Rox, so our middle school award winner who wrote the best essay in the city of Forest Grove for If She Was Mayor is Roxini. Will you please come board? Okay, hang on, let me get this off. So here's, here's your $100. And she's going to run because she's also a soccer player and has tryouts. So we're going to move on to the high school category, and this individual was in my leadership class three years ago. I will not go on, not, she was like, oh my God. Would Elizabeth Hanson please come up? Elizabeth is our second place winner and is going to receive $75 from the city of Forest Grove. And also, one of my former students, but I taught him health, is Christopher Walsh. He took first place in the digital contest. Okay, here's your $100. You're good. All right, thank you. We are going to move on to our next award, and I'm going to actually ask members of the Historic Landmarks Board to join me up here, and that'd be George and Neil, come up for the Eric G Stewart Award, please, and Jennifer, too. My apologies.
The, for 2025, the Eric G Stewart Award is awarded to Elena Ewing in recognition of her outstanding commitment to the preservation of Forest Grove's history. The Forest Grove Historic Landmarks Board has chosen to bestow the 2025 Eric G Stewart Award to Elena Ewing. Elena Ewing has been an extremely valuable resource at Forest Grove City Council liaison, where she served a total of nine years. The board is pleased to be awarding her for her outstanding efforts to help preserve the architectural treasures of Forest Grove. Elena has served the city of Forest Grove for 26 years, starting in 1998 with the Planning Commission for six years. Then in 2004, she, she served, started serving on the city council for 20 years. During that time on the city council, she was the board liaison for three different terms for a total of nine years, helping to guide the appointed board members that applies to city needs, the board's goals, and legal requirements. During her tenure, tenure as council liaison, she helped in the development of three of our historical districts, helped in the development of the landmarks board, home improvement seminars, encouraged the participation, participation of many community events. She was instrumental in ensuring that we had received government's 101 to ensure our actions were following proper legal process. She encouraged and guided the board to document the procedure for implementing the mini-grants program, as well as the process for board review of exterior changes. Elena has been a respected and valuable resource, both, both in her act, in her active terms as liaison, and also as a member of the Forest Grove City Council, helping make the Forest Grove Historic Landmarks Board one of the most significant boards and commissions in Forest Grove. We applaud the work of Elena and her dedication to preserve, promote, and advocate for Forest Grove's irreplaceable historic sites and assets for the cultural, economic, and edu- educational benefits of everyone. We appreciate Elena Ewing's efforts. Thank you.
She's homesick.
Yeah, she's got pneumonia, she'd be here. She's, she's sorry that, but she just can't make it, so she sends her thank yous.
Thank you, Historic Landmarks Board. Yeah, I'll be in like two, two different sections. So we're going to move on to proclamations. Thank you, future mayors, thank you, future mayors and families. Okay. So, next up are proclamations. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation create, Preservation created Preservation Month to spotlight grassroots preservation efforts in America, and whereas Preservation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the diverse and unique heritage of our country's cities and states, and enable more Americans to become involved in the preservation movement, and whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local, local pride, and maintain community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals to help preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Preservation Month in Forest Grove, Oregon, and calls upon the people to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observance. Okay, I'm going to have Council, Council President Valenzuela. Thank you, Mayor. Proclamación, considerando que el Fondo Nacional de la, para la preservación histórica creó el mes de la preservación para destacar los esfuerzos comunitarios de preservación en Estados Unidos y considerando que el mes de la preservación brinda la oportunidad de celebrar el patrimonio diverso y único en las ciudades y estados de nuestro país y permitir que más estadounidenses se involúnkeren en el movimiento de preservación. Y considerando que la preservación histórica es una herramienta eficaz para gestionar el crecimiento y el desarrollo sustentable, revitalizar vecindarios, fomentar el orgullo local, y mantener el carácter comunitario al tiempo que mejora la habitabilidad. Y considerando que la preservación histórica es relevante para las comunidades de todo el país, tanto urbanas como rurales, y para los estadounidenses de todas las edades, todos los ámbitos de la vida, y todos los orígenes étnicos. Y considerando que es importante celebrar el papel de la historia en nuestras vidas y las contribuciones hechas por personas dedicadas para ayudar a preservar los aspectos tangibles del patrimonio que nos ha moldeado como pueblo. Ahora, por lo tanto, el ayuntamiento de la ciudad de Forest Grove, por la presente, proclama el mes de mayo 2025 como el mes nacional de la preservación en Forest Grove, Oregon, y hace un llamado a la gente de Forest Grove a unirse a sus conciudadanos de todos los Estados Unidos para reconocer y participar en esta celebración especial. En testimonio de lo cual, he suscrito la presencia, la presente, y ha hecho que el sello de la ciudad, excuse me, de Forest Grove, Oregon, se emplace este día 12 de mayo 2025 por nuestra alcaldesa, Melinda Wenzel. Thank, thank you, Counselor. Moving on to item B, some of you, before I begin with item B, which is public comment, some of you may have heard or know that we've had some network issues today at the city. So we are trying to get our Zoom up and working, but if you are watching on TVC-TV and would like to give public comment, for those wishing to get public comment, you may call 503-992-3339 to engage in public comment, and/or we're trying to get Zoom up again right now. Okay, we're thinking our network is working again, so fingers crossed. Okay, let's move on to public comment, because we have some public comment signups. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Okay, so I have Mr. Chaz Hunley signed up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. During the work session immediately preceding this event, there was a desire for a universal calendar for activities and events in Forest Grove expressed by city residents. I am pleased to report that the newspaper I'm launching in town, News in the Grove, is in the final stages of launching such a calendar. All that remains is to fund it.
Recording in progress.
City businesses, city governments, individuals can all take part in doing this. My contact information is easily found at newsinthegrove.com, where anyone can also sign up to receive our free email newsletter, which comes out every Friday except last week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dale Feek. Mr. Dale Feek. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Feek.
Thank you, Mayor Wenzel and councillors. And I do want to say councillor Mariana Valenzuela. Did I get it right?
Valenzuela.
Valenzuela, thank you very much. I appreciate you translating. Mayor Wenzel, you have the authority as the presiding officer. May I have three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, the time's not up there because it's not working?
It is up there.
Oh, it's working on ours. You're at 1:30 now. So you're at another, you're at 2:30. You should go, you should start talking.
Let me know when 15 minutes before I'm up, okay?
Did you say 15? Oh, okay.
Does the time start now? I'm confused.
We're good. We have time starting. You're at 2:55. Go ahead.
Thank you. What I gave you is, I went to the bend on May 8th, May 9th, made public comment before the Environmental Quality Commission meetings on Thursday. And what I gave you is part of the email I already sent to you, which has a link to it. So this is just a summary of that. And this is what I said before the Environmental Quality Commission. Five-member board appointed by the governors that oversees director of the EQ and whatever. I'm concerned, and so is councillor Donna Gutherson. I'm pleased. She made front page of the News Times. The only minority destroying this country are the billionaires. I concur. And I appreciate her leadership in going at the flagpole on first and third Fridays from 4:30 to 6:30 and having her voice and stand out against the regime of Trump, Musk, and Vance. I gave most of you already, the ones that took the book On Tyranny, 20 Lessons from the 20th Century by Timothy Snyder. I gave that to all the commissioners. Previously, at the Environmental Quality Commission meeting, they affirm me that they're reading the book. So that's important. 20 Lessons, Actions to Take to Stop Trump Making the United States A Dictatorial Government. So defend institutions. Lesson number two, number 10, defend the truth. It is institutions that help us preserve decency. They need our help as well. Do not speak of our institutions unless you make them yours by acting on their behalf. Institutions not protect themselves. They fall one after another unless each is defended from the beginning. So choose an institution that care about a court, a newspaper, News in the Grove, a law, labor union, and take its side. I take your side.
Recording in progress.
And I take also the side of the county commissioners. Believe in truth. To abandon facts is to abandon freedom. If nothing is true, then no one can criticize power because there is no basis among which to do so. If nothing is true, then all is spectacle. The biggest wallet pays for the most blinding lights. Please take it seriously. We are in a crisis in the United States.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Carol Allen. Hello, Carol.
Need all my information again?
Nope, we got it. You're good.
Anyway, last, two weeks ago, I was here because of National Day of Prayer. And I shared with you some of my testimony. And I felt like it was really important for me to edify the fact that even though a person gets saved by the Lord Jesus Christ, you have to learn the kind of, you don't know how to love unless God loves you, unless He breaks down the wall and the pains and the hurts. And unless you know the love of the Creator, you're never going to be happy. You're never going to be satisfied. It says in 1 John 4:9, 10, "This is how God showed His love among us." He sent His one and only Son into the world that we might love, live through Him. This is love. It is not that we loved God, but He loved us first and sent His Son Jesus as an atoning sacrifice for my sins. And when God did that in my life, it started me on a roll of being able to forgive and to be able to walk with joy and happiness. And that's what I wanted to share tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give public comment? And seeing none, we're going to move on with our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be, and will all be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining item. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
The consent agenda was moved by council president Valenzuela and seconded by councillor Martinez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a seven to zero vote. Item D, additions or deletions. City manager, are there any additions or deletions?
No additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
Any proposed by councillors? Seeing none, we're now going to move on to our presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. So I would invite, our first and only presentation tonight is from our Historic Landmarks Board. It's their annual report. I'm going to invite the chair, Jennifer Brent, and senior planner, Matthew Johnson, up for the presentation.
Good evening, councillor. Matt Johnson, senior planner.
Jennifer Brent, the chair of the Historic Landmarks. We are, we were appointed by the city of Forest Grove Council to serve the city. We are comprised of residents with the expertise or interested in historic preservation, works in partnership with the city staff to oversee the preservation of the city's architectural and cultural heritage, and acts as a resource for education, public awareness on historic issues. What we do, we review new development, alteration, restoration, and demolition of properties within historic history, recommend properties for landmark designation, advise on preservation-related ordinances, incentives, and policies. We promote historic education through events, financial, and others. We collaborate with the state preservation agencies, local organizations. Last year, in the spring, Forest Grove hosted a SHIPA Historic Preservation Conference right here in our own city. Using that as a template, we hosted our own event for our city. We used leftover SHIPA grant money to fulfill our outreach goal. This year's community outreach will be another window workshop. It's for all those new homeowners that discovered that their beautiful historic home with wooden windows. It's a little breezy in the winter. And that will be in July?
June.
June. Thank you. Okay. And our next SHIPA cycle will include hiring consultants to create the standards and guidelines for historic history. Because the downtown district is commercial, we have to get appropriate rules to govern the coast and to protect the environment.
Mariah, can you advance this slide? Thanks. I got it. Thank you.
Then we will do a community outreach to inform and share the results. And hopefully, then it will be on sale for adoption in the winter of...
That's good? Great, thank you. Questions for Jennifer or Matt? Councillor Schimmel. Can we go back one slide? Mariah.
Well, thank you both for presenting this material. I'm familiar with the rich history of the Historic Landmarks Board with our historic housing district. I was curious about the connection with our historic commercial district. You know, and given that we have programs with money to revitalize our historic downtown, the connection between the Historic Landmarks Board and that effort.
I don't have an answer to that.
That's a great question. The staff is seeking a consultant at this time, and that's exactly what they'll do. It's on the ground and develop a course of history that tests time and that we see day, but really spell it out, not just in a narrative, but within development standards. So that, we're seeking the security by the end of August. Prior to that, though, my understanding that we'd like to have a workshop with you guys first. That way, we can educate you in the public just kind of what this process is like. And then ultimately understand what your expectations are from these standards. But to summarize briefly, we're going to enhance and build off what already exists today. In 2009, we adopted our design guideline, standards and structural standards guidelines, excuse me, for downtown, specifically town center zones. So a lot of what exists today, we will be building on. So things like the form of the building, the way that the building aligns to the street, specifically downtown, how the rhythm between the upstairs, whether that's living, office, and lower, commercial, top front, how that mingles with the rest of downtown. We'll be enhancing those standards specific to our historic district, which is much smaller than our town center zone area. Our historic downtown, about 40,000.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate the intentionality. Other than the city staff, I'd be curious how the Historic Landmarks Board itself might intersect with the process as we're approving those grants for those enhancements, how the, if, or how the Landmark Board might intersect with that decision-making process as they have with the housing district.
I think I follow. So specifically, if I may clarify, are you asking what was the board's role in securing the grant money and how that application process went?
No, my understanding is with the historic housing districts, they've had decision-making authority in approving grants. In this case, with the commercial district that's going through the URA board. But what you're alluding to regarding having a consultant come in and provide some guidance on preservation standards and guidance, maybe even on the structural integrity challenges, that I think is vital and important. I appreciate that that's your intention. I just didn't know if the Historic Landmarks Board has some synthesis into that process at some point.
I think, maybe I'm still kind of green toward the city, but prior to my arrival, there was something similar to the building improvement grant that was specific to individual properties in historic district. That's what you're referring to. This is, this is not that process. This is a state grant funded down to, from the federal historic. But in terms of how that's applied, it's for the city, for the community. It's not specific or to be used by individual property.
So I think people are on their own now, taking care of, following the guidelines. So our mandate is about creating the standards. If that's the question.
Yeah, well, I'm definitely a fan of the standard, using standard where possible. So I understand it may be an evolving question that we stored out, specifically on the commercial side.
That's our goal. We spent many years creating the residential standards guidelines. And we'll here tell you about giving birth to those. So we have a little bit of experience getting this through the eye of the needle. But it's really important to get this in there. And it protects all of the owner.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. The presentation, the award for councillor Ewing was very nice as well. So thank you, HLV.
Thank you.
Okay. The city council will now continue the public hearing opened on April 28, 2025, concerning ordinance number 2025-01. Staff will now brief council on any new information received since the last meeting.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council.
There you are. I was like, where's Dan?
Dan Rirt, senior planner, Community Development Department. There has been no further communication since your first reading of the ordinance on April 28. So nothing more received.
Okay, does council have any additional questions for staff? Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on the proposal? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone giving, nope. Okay, come on up. Wait, this is for the EOA, right? Am I on the wrong one?
All right, Mariah, do you have the...
No, what are you trying to comment on? The EOA, the Economic Opportunity Analysis?
On the, yes, on the Economic Opportunities Analysis.
All right.
It should be in the city council packet. I don't know if the city recorder might, there it is.
Yep. Okay, then can we have our three-minute timer? He's providing public comment.
Dale Feek, for the record. Resident of Forest Grove since 1966. Started as a fifth-grade teacher and teaching at Joseph Gill Elementary School. Retired in 2000. I'm for all the work that the planning department does. I just want to make sure that things are addressed in the way of data centers and economic development. As you know, I was instrumental in making appeal to the planning commission, and I actually appealed myself to you as councillors in not accepting the crane data center land use application and getting a land use compatibility statement from you. And where, at where crane data center, through getting 10 megawatts of power, got to work their way in to start maybe constructing their data center on the property they own. They did not get a, as so far, they have not received a wetland permit. I don't think any dirt should be moved until they get that from the Department of State Lands. That's what I think. Economic development is important, but also it's important to make sure we are getting development. We are getting money from it. It's not costing taxpayers money, extra money. And I'm glad that the state legislation addressing that. And I think that the Director of Power and Light is addressing it somewhat so that, so that the ratepayers won't have to pay for the extra electricity that's necessary to power, not necessarily the 10 megawatts, the 100 megawatts that in time they want to do in Phase Two. So I am for economic development, but I'm for development that is sound and that doesn't cost ratepayers extra money and that has a purpose and is not hurting the environment too much. So whatever that means, in particular this, what I see on the board, that's my public statement. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do any councillors have clarifying questions regarding the testimony provided? Okay, if there are no further questions, I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion from council to approve a second reading of ordinance 2025-01 to amend the Forest Grove Comprehensive Plan to replace the 2019 Economic Opportunities Analysis with the 2025 E O A and add the 2025 E O A as a plan appendix?
Still move?
A second. Ordinance 2025-01 was moved by councillor Shimel and seconded by councillor Martinez. Do any councillors wish to comment or discuss the motion? Any discussion? Okay, City Manager, will you please read the ordinance by title only for the second reading?
Ordinance 2025-01, amending the Forest Grove Comprehensive Plan to replace the city's 2019 Economic Opportunities Analysis with the 2025 Economic Opportunities Analysis Update and adding the 2025 Economic Opportunities Analysis Update as a comprehensive plan appendix, file number 3112500002-PLNG.
Great, thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Councillor Shimel?
Yes.
Councillor Falconer? Councillor Martinez?
Yes.
Councillor Marshall?
Yes.
Councillor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Let the record show the motion passes and ordinance number 2025-01 is adopted by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on. I will now open the public hearing for the first reading of ordinance 2025-02, amending the Forest Grove Development Code and adopting revised floodplain management regulations in compliance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency's 2024 Flood Hazard Management Model Ordinance. Adoption of an ordinance is a legislative action by the City Council. Under the City Council's rules, the City Council must hold two readings of the ordinance prior to final adoption. After the first reading tonight, by the City Council will consider a motion to adopt the ordinance for the first reading and to continue this public hearing to the May 27 City Council meeting for a second reading. Senior Planner Dan Reardon is now, will now present the staff report and recommendation for City Council consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, for the record, Dan Reardon, Senior Planner with the Planning Division. Do have a PowerPoint presentation to share with the council this evening. Some of this will be familiar from your work session held on April 28th, but we went through that pretty, pretty fast, and so we'll have a little bit more time this evening to go through some of the details and nuances of what's being requested. So the purpose of the the public hearing is to, well, I'll back up for a moment. On April 28th, City Council held a work session to consider amendments to the Forest Grove Development Code to adopt the ordinance. Thank you. This is a mandate from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. So this is something that the city is required to do. During the work session, City Council, City Council reached consensus to proceed with option two that requires amending the Forest Grove Development Code to incorporate the FEMA Model Floodplain Ordinance. And as you may recall, there were three options, and I'll touch on those three options briefly, part of the presentation. But tonight's public hearing provides an opportunity for City Council's consideration of ordinance 2025-02 for first reading to amend the Forest Grove Development Code to incorporate the FEMA Model Floodplain Ordinance. So this map was presented during your work session on April 28th. It shows the areas that are subject to floodplains. Most of this area is outside of the city limits. There's a little bit in the beige area that's affected on the far, that's affected by these Development Code amendments. That includes areas in the far northeast portion of the city and the far southwest portion of the city. Along Gales Creek, along the southwest portion of the city limits, the city limits extends beyond the urban growth boundary, so there's quite a bit of land that's actually unincorporated. It's in the, in the county, but it's inside the U G B. And so the city does the development review for agricultural buildings that might be impacted that are in the front. You can see most of the city would be unaffected by these proposed Development Code amendments. Next slide, please. So the three options that I mentioned, one was to prohibit all new development in the floodplain. This is the most restrictive option and could cause some issues with respect to the taking of private property for a public purpose. So that's a consideration with, now moving forward with option one. Option two is amending the Development Code to incorporate the FEMA Model Ordinance. And then option three is an ad hoc approach where individual development proposals would require a permit-by-permit review to look at mitigation for any potential impacts to the floodplain. This option really doesn't mesh real well with the Oregon Land Use Planning Program, where clear and objective standards really need to be in the Development Code. So it's clear what an application will be reviewed against rather than by taking an ad hoc approach, where there's real no certainty into how the development might be reviewed. It'll be subject to these requirements. Next slide, please. So there are two important concepts that are part of this proposal. One is no net loss of a floodplain function. It's a standard where adverse development impacts must be avoided preferably or offset through compliance with requirements that are now in the Development Code proposal for council's consideration. And the objective is that there's no net change in the floodplain function from existing condition. And floodplain functions include floodwater storage, water quality, and retaining vegetation. These functions must be maintained. So option two is the recommended approach for one very important reason. The city attorney advised that option two complies with Oregon's land use planning rules, requiring clear and objective standards in local development codes, especially affecting residential development. And as I mentioned, option one is the most restrictive approach, and option three is an ad hoc approach that doesn't comply with the Oregon land use plan. So I'm going to go over briefly what the amendments are, so everyone's aware of what's included in the ordinance. One amendment is modifying Development Code Article 12. It's where all of the definitions are for land use review. There are over 50, 52 basically definitions related specifically to floodplain. And this kind of clutters the general land use section of the Development Code. And there are some inconsistencies with similar terms used for general land use review. There's inconsistencies between the land use, general land use review, and similar terms used specifically for floodplain management. One example is variance. A variance under the floodplain management rules means something entirely different than a variance under general land use rules. And so to avoid confusion moving forward into the clutter Article 12, the Development Code amendments include moving all of the floodplain-related definitions to the section of the Development Code where the floodplain management ordinance would reside, and that's in Article 8. And so hopefully that will clarify things and avoid confusion moving forward. Next slide, please. So moving to Development Code Article 8, this is where the general development standards reside in the Development Code. The first amendment, set of amendments would be to amend the table of contents to reflect the changes to Article 8 as a result of adopting the FEMA Model Ordinance. So some of the section numbers have changed, some additional sections have been added. There are basically seven sections that would be added to the Development Code for the FEMA Floodplain Model Ordinance. And then the first section that deals with floodplain management is Section 17.8.315 related to the Floodplain Management Code. And this section just basically provides some introductory provisions, identifies the statutory authorization for floodplain management under state law, the purpose for floodplain management, and then generally methods for reducing floodplain loss. Next slide, please. Section 17.8.320 is where all the definitions related to floodplain management would be. So this would, it would be its own section in Article 8 of the Development Code. Section 17.8.325 includes the provisions for floodplain management. This specifically identifies the areas that are subject to the floodplain management ordinance. So that would include the floodway and the 100-year floodplain. And this section of the code also would establish the basis for establishing and defining what constitutes special flood hazard area. And again, that's the floodway and the 100-year. Section 17.8.330 is everything related to floodplain management administration. This section outlines who is the local floodplain administrator for the city and what their duties and responsibilities are. And in the Development Code as it is today, the city engineer, AKA the Public Works and Engineering Director, is the city's designated floodplain manager. And that would continue with the, with the amendments. And so the floodplain manager's duties includes doing permit review, processing variance requests, and reporting to FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program. Section 17.8.335, this is the most important element of the code amendments. This is where the standards are for flood hazard reduction that would, for development to potentially affect the special flood hazard areas, floodway, and the 100-year floodplain. And so this would identify things that can be done to minimize the potential for losses should flooding occur. So anchoring structures, elevating structures, identifying construction material and methods for reducing floodplain impact or flood impact. Next slide, please. So the provisions for flood hazard reduction include, as I just mentioned, anchoring structures, requiring that all new construction and substantial improvements be constructed using methods to minimize flood damage, and requiring that mechanical equipment, so electrical, heating, ventilation, and other facilities be raised above flood elevation. Excellent. Section 17.8.340 are where the standards are specifically for impacts to the floodway. The floodway is the channel of a water course and adjacent areas that must be reserved for discharging floodwaters without increasing the water surface elevations above a specific height. So this is really the channel of a stream that would be probably the best example. And then section 17.8.345 are the standards for areas outside of the floodway where there's more shallow flooding potentially, where base flood elevation depths range from one to three feet above ground and where a defined channel for a stream or water course does not exist. Section 17.8.350 are the standards for protection of special flood hazard areas and protection of floodplain functions. This is the section where requirements for no net loss reside in the floodplain management ordinance. So it provides details on ways to address no net loss and mitigation, any required mitigation to offset development impacts. And within the 100-year floodplain, no net loss is required for development in several specific areas. One that reduces the undeveloped space. So where site might be vacant now, but development would, would encroach into that vacant area. Where impervious surfaces are increased or where development could impact the loss of trees six inches in diameter or greater. So that gets back to that vegetation function of the special flood hazard. So the code amendment specifies that no net loss can be achieved by doing three things. Avoiding negative impacts to floodplain function, minimizing remaining impacts if avoidance is impossible, or replacing and/or otherwise compensating for residual floodplain impact. The code specifies that no net loss must be provided in order of a specific order of preference. First, the lot or parcel where the development impact occurs. That's the, that's what's preferred. If that can't happen, then the same water body where the development is proposed. So if it would impact Gales Creek, then the mitigation must be done somewhere along Gales Creek or within the same hydrologically connected area as a proposed development, so kind of more the watershed. Required mitigation necessary to offset development impacts is specified in the code, and mitigation is based on the specific preferences. And the minimum amount of required mitigation is a one-to-one offset for development impacts to impervious surface, two-to-one for undeveloped space, and three-to-one to six-for-one for impacts to trees depending on tree diameter. And there's a table in the code amendments that spells. Excellent. Activities are activities that are exempt from the no net loss standards. This includes normal maintenance of structures, normal street sidewalk or road maintenance, routine maintenance, landscaping not involving grading, routine agricultural and tree management practices, normal maintenance of utilities, normal maintenance of flood control facilities, habitat restoration activities, and the preemptive removal of trees to manage the spread of invasive species. And where this one's important is, is related to something like the Emerald Dashboard. It's affecting the ash trees, and the ash trees like these floodplain areas. And so their clean water services in particular has been dealing with this issue. Slide, please. And then there are two sections that are proposed to remain that are currently in the code. One with respect to addressing critical facilities, so flood, addressing flood issues for critical facilities, including schools, assisted living facilities, hospitals, emergency facilities, and so forth. So reducing impacts to those areas. And then there's a section that's in the code right now that just identifies some good, sound environmental practices for habitat-friendly development, and that's proposed to remain. So just real quickly, because this is an amendment to the Development Code, there are criteria that apply that are related to a code text amendment. And there are two basic criteria that need to be considered. One is that the text amendment is consistent with the relevant goals and policies of the Forest Grove Comprehensive Plan, and that the text amendment is consistent with the relevant statewide and regional planning goals, programs, and rules. And attached to the ordinance as exhibit A, the, as exhibit B, there are specific findings that address the criteria and how, how the Development Code amendments do in fact comply with the relevant goals of the Comprehensive Plan statewide and regional plan. So that's, those are exhibits to the, for the. So very briefly, the Planning Commission held a public hearing back in April to consider the Development Code amendments. And back in April, the Planning Commission adopted a motion recommending that the City Council do in fact approve an ordinance amending the Forest Grove Development Code to incorporate the FEMA Model Floodplain Ordinance. Next slide. So staff's recommendation is that the City Council approve first reading of the ordinance, 2025-02, tonight, and then continue your public hearing to May 27th for second reading and final ordinance adoption. And then one important thing is that we're under a timeline to comply with FEMA mandated deadlines. So adopting the ordinance on May 27th would ensure that the city meets the mandated deadline and that the Development Code amendments are in effect by July 1, 2020. This concludes the staff presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Dan. Any questions for staff? Yep, seeing no questions. Great. Public testimony persons in the audience or on Zoom may now present testimony on this matter. If you wish to testify, please provide your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. City Recorder, is anyone in the community eligible to sign up to testify? Nope. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify? Come on up, Mr. Feig.
I agree. I didn't get enough sleep either.
Sorry, I was not trying to, I was trying to hold it in.
Mayor Wenzel, President, Council President, Mariana Valenzuela, and Councillor Dale Feig, 3363 Levine Drive, Forest Grove, Oregon. I'm for the amendment. I highly respect Dan Reardon and his staff and the analysis they do in taking a look at the codes and that kind of work. So they do their due diligence. Floodplain is important. Part of the comments that I sent to the state land boards related to Crane Data Set had to do with floodplains and the, and where the water would come if the Skalgen's Dam would breach and the 30 feet of water would come through there and where it would go flowing. And there was a presentation made by FEMA because the Bureau, anyway, the federal government owns the dam. And they decided that they were not going to okay the raising of the dam as clean water services wanted because they needed for temperature for falling river. They're not doing that. They're just going to reinforce it. So, but that's not going to happen for maybe 10 years. And so there could be a breach of that dam if there's a cascade or earthquake. So the question becomes, where does that water go? And it's going to go kind of down floodplain. And the state kind of denied my state land boards and the specialist, the company that Crane hired to do a analysis of the floodplain was biased. By that, I mean it was a political document as well as a technical document. By that, I mean it was a political document as well as a technical document. I'm challenging that. And so the floodplain does come close to Crane Data Center, and they addressed it up to the property line, but they didn't address the actual mitigation necessary for the wetlands. What I'm saying is, is if there is a breach of the dam, there is going to be necessity to protect the lands that are downstream of that. I don't think that's talked about here. It's just something that needs to be considered when you do okaying of development in that area. It's something that maybe can't be required by code, but it certainly should be considered. That's all I want to say.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Seeing none, I will now ask for a motion from council to adopt ordinance 2025-02 for the first reading and to continue this public hearing to the May 27th City Council meeting for a second reading.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2025-02 second.
Orderance 2025-02 is moved by Council Martinez and seconded by Council Gustafson. The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the city manager please read the ordinance by title only for a first reading?
Ordinance 2025-02, amending Forest Grove Development Code Article 8 and 12 to adopt revised floodplain management regulations and definitions in compliance with Federal Emergency Management Agency 2024 Flood Hazard Management Model Ordinance, File Number 3112500005PLNG.
Great. Thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll for the first reading?
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Schimmel?
Yes.
Counselor Falconer?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Yes. The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to item F3, which is Resolution 2025-17, endorsing a locally preferred alternative for the Tuolton Valley Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project. And Dan's in the hot seat a lot tonight.
It's fine. Thank you, Mayor, members of the State Council, Dan Riordan, Senior Planner, Planning Division. I have a PowerPoint presentation for this agenda item as well. It's my pleasure this evening to present to City Council a resolution to endorse the locally preferred alternative for the TV Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project. The city Forest Grove is one of the project partners looking at this project and advancing it to the next phase. So tonight, City Council will consider a request from Metro and TriMet specifically and from city staff to adopt a resolution endorsing the TV Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project Locally Preferred Alternative, or LPA. The LPA was recommended by the Project Steering Committee back in February. The committee included elected leaders among the project partners and project stakeholders, including nonprofit community organizations such as Central Coeur d'Or. City Council held a work session on the LPA back on April 28th to review the LPA, including those bus stop locations, which is one of the components of the LPA. So the LPA is an important element of this project. It's required for federal funding and to advance the project to the next phase, which is called project development. And project development can be thought of as preliminary engineering. So this is where the project gets into much more detail about design of stations and bus pullouts. And there are a number of things that will be looked at in much more detail besides just general locations for bus stations. The LPA is also required for a federal grant from the Federal Transit Administration for construction funding. The construction phase, of course, follows the project development and preliminary engineering phase. The federal funding request will likely be in the amounts of $150 million from Federal Transit Administration with a local and regional and state match of another $150 million for a total project cost of $300. So it would be fifty, fifty. Excellent. So the LPA does three things. It identifies the extent of the project, the project corridor. So for this project, it would be from the Beaverton Transit Center along TV Highway to the B Street and 19th Avenue, Line 57 Terminus in downtown Forest Grove. So the project corridor basically follows what is now Line 57. The other thing the LPA identifies is the mode of operation, which would be bus rapid transit, which is a form of high-capacity transit. And then the third thing the LPA does is identify general bus stop locations. So the LPA, there are two exhibits to the LPA. One is Exhibit A, which just provides a little bit of description of the project. And it recognizes that in February, the TV Highway Project Steering Committee recommended the, what's being called the TV Highway Transit and Safety Project Locally Preferred Alternative. And that the recommended recommendation is to include high-capacity transit in the Tuolton Valley Corridor with bus rapid transit at the general locations of the bus stop stations identified on the LPA map. Again, it would operate between the Beaverton Transit Center and the B Street Terminus and Forest Grove and follow essentially what is Line 57. So Exhibit B is a specific map, and this is the map that shows the general bus stop locations, or I should say bus station locations. That's more correct. And again, the, this was something that was discussed in the City Council work session. There has been an attempt made to optimize bus station locations so that they're on average about one-third mile. So that was one of the project objectives. And then the bus station locations were also identified based on ridership, number of lift deployments, and the destinations served. So as part of the project development phase, this is the next phase of the project, there will be several committees established. One will be a community advisory committee. That committee will be formed to guide community outreach, inform project design, station platform locations, and other project amenities that might be important to the community, such as real-time arrival information or lighting, trash reception, to make the bus station locations more comfortable for the ride. The CAC will include residents, business and property owners, community organizations, and persons with disabilities, as well as persons who ride trans. There will be a second committee formed, a policy and budget committee. That will include one elected representative or executive representative from the project partners and one member of the community advisory committee. So there will be an opportunity for elected members representing each of the project partners to serve on policy and budget. And then there will be a third committee, a technical advisory committee. There was one that was established as part of the planning phase of the project, and that will basically continue on to facilitate communication and collaboration among the partners and address any technical issues that come up to make recommendations. So the proposed bus rapid transit station locations, they're on the slide. I won't read them all. They're basically hit that one-third spacing objective. They also serve some of the most important destinations in the community, including the Ballot Town Shopping Center. There would be an enhanced bus station serving the Rose Grove community, and also a station at U Street, which is a pretty heavily used bus stop currently, both at Adair, on Adair, and Pacific Ave. So as I mentioned, the bus station locations were identified on several factors. I mentioned ridership numbers and lift deployments, but also equity was a consideration. And identifying areas in need of specific safety improvements, where there may be unsafe crossings now or lack of sidewalks. One objective of the project is to improve the crossings and make sure that there is safe pedestrian and bicycle access to each of the stations, a really important element of the project. And then planning considerations included a desire to locate stations at the far side of traffic signals and intersections and within existing right-of-way. And that, as I mentioned, to improve safe access, including crosswalks and optimizing the station location. Next slide, please. So next steps, we're asking the City Council to consider and take action on the resolution endorsing the LPA tonight. If the City Council chooses to adopt the resolution, approve the resolution endorsing the LPA, staff would return in June or July with an intergovernmental agreement that will provide more detail about the city's and TriMet's role and responsibility in the project development phase of the project, and also expected funding commitments for the project development phase, and identification of a source of revenue to fund the expected commitment. And right now, the anticipated revenue source would be transportation development tax fund, which would be, can be used for this type of improvement in planning work. So the city's project development funding commitment is expected to be about $75,000 over the next two fiscal years, starting in FY '26 and '27. And we anticipate that for the construction phase of the project, beginning in FY '27, that the city's commitment would be roughly $175,000. So that's some, those numbers are, something close to those numbers will be in the IGA presented to the City Council. So staff recommends that City Council approve the resolution endorsing the LPA so that the project can advance to the project development preliminary engineering. With staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Counselor Schimmel?
Well, just to recap, I think a very important point you made last time was that the reason for the eliminating stops was the $300 million maximum. Could you reiterate that?
Yeah, during the course of the planning project, it was clear that support among the project partners was for a continuous project from the Beaverton Transit Center all the way to the Terminus and Forest Grove at B Street. And in order to do that, some trade-offs had to be made to stay within that $300 million cap for a federal small starts funding allocation. So that's the maximum that can be allocated for the project. And so that resulted in elimination of some stops along the corridor so that the project wouldn't have to necessarily be phased, because it was clear there would be no support.
And, yeah. Will the TDT offer enough sufficient funds for the 175?
There is, yeah, the city has enough in the TDT fund to fund the improvements. It will require action by what's called the Washington County Coordinating Committee. And all of the jurisdictions will likely partner to make a request to use the TDT funds that are available for this project.
Any other questions for staff?
Yep. No, I just have a comment. Thank you for the presentation. I understand that there needs to be compromise. You know, it's just difficult because it's a very good project, but we can never get the 100% that we want. You know, we just get almost there. But you know, this eliminating some stops, it's going to be challenging for some people. It's going to present a challenge for some people. So they want to use the word equity, but not completely being able to apply it or implement it for a project. And that's just really.
Just Counselor Valenzuela, appreciate that comment. And I just want to be clear, too, that there was public outreach during. There was quite a bit of effort to meet the community during the course of the planning phase to get input and things like station.
Any other questions for Dan? Wait, is there a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution 2025-17.
Second. Resolution 2025-17 was moved by Counselor Schimmel and seconded by Council President Valenzuela. Is there any discussion on it? Any discussion? I mean, I think we had discussion at the work session and, okay, will the city manager read it by title only, please?
Resolution 2025-17, endorsing a locally preferred alternative for the Tuolton Valley Highway Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Okay, great. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-17, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Resolution 2025-17 is passed by the Forest Grove City Council in a seven to zero vote. Moving on to, oh, Dan, you're free. Thank you, Dan. Resolution 2025-18, amending council rules subsection 4.1, 6.42, 9.2, 10.2, 11.2, and 14.3, and deleting subsection 3.12 in its entirety. And I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Jesse Vander Zanin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present on Resolution 2025-18. Brief background, the City Council held a work session on April 28th to discuss updates to the City Council Rules of Procedure. The City Council reached a consensus on the following items. The first one was to research shortening the council rules to ensure they are not redundant with the city charter and/or find examples of one- to-two-page council agreements that may alleviate the need for council rules by providing an overall framework for communications. This was the subject of a recent city manager meeting, and I do have two examples of that. So the research has started. The second was to create a boards and commissions handbook that includes the council rules and other relevant information pertaining to all boards and commissions. That project will get started shortly. I recently met with Jamie Zeke about that, and that is, that's in progress. And then third was, council reached a consensus to make the following rule changes while the above research moves forward. That was to remove the section pertaining to excused and unexcused absences, or section 3.12. Update the council rules to match the voter-approved changes in the city charter. This was sections 4.1, 9.2, 10.2, and 11.2. Change place of residence to city of residence or business. That was section 6.4.2. And then lastly, section 14.3, to remove so long as the board and commission members live within the Forest Grove School District to allowing them to live outside of the city and not defining outside of the city as the Forest Grove School District. There was also consensus to consider extending the absence from the city from 40 to 60 days to better match the LOC template. However, that upon further research would require a change in the city charter. So with that, that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Jesse? Seeing none. Is there a motion from council?
I move that we accept Resolution 2025-18.
Second.
Resolution 2025-18 was moved by Council Martinez and seconded by Counselor Falconer. Any discussion by council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing none. Resolution 2025-18 is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. We are now going to move on to council communications. We'll start with our council president, Counselor Valenzuela.
I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor. The Policy Advisory Board canceled their meeting, and the library hasn't come up yet.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Falconer?
I have some.
Okay, Counsel Gustafson?
I attended Main Street Conference this weekend, and there was a discussion about federal funds and how they've all been frozen except for generally military for the most part, and how that's going to really affect all Main Street programs in the U.S. So something to keep in mind when we're talking about grants coming from the federal government for revitalization. Also had a meeting with the League of Women Voters, and we talked about reports on fire season, although I haven't talked to the fire department or anyone yet, because I just had this meeting today. We're at a higher risk this year than normal, is what they're anticipating, and especially Western Oregon. So of course, they're advising people to, you know, trim their trees, their bushes, clean out their gutters, do all the things possible that you can do to protect your home. And Public Arts Commission, they talked about their strategic plan and their five-year plan, which is in draft. I think they're about done with the draft form. And Festival of Arts happened this last Wednesday. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was really awesome. The Lincoln Park. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was really awesome. The Lincoln Park mural, they're scheduling that mural, the start of the painting, very soon. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Council Marshall?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Council Martinez?
So in addition to what our City Manager had on his report for the Rural Fire Department, is the only thing I really have is that we're working to decommission the ladder truck. It's only been in use for about five years and really has, I think it was 8,000 miles on it. So the intent is to sell it, and they can get a nice price for that. We aren't, we don't, we rarely use the truck, and it, and we're not able to keep up with the training necessary. It was seen as a good move just to stop using that, decommissioning it. That's it.
Great, thank you. Council Schimmel?
Well, I'll stick with what's noteworthy around CCE. They're busy this week at the farmer's market and other events to help support the Police Facility Bond. Just following up on earlier work session comments, you know, I do welcome any feedback from colleagues about, you know, how we want CCE to focus its time over the second half of the year, or June through the end of the year, particularly in light of the 2040, or 2040 vision, I don't know what to call it. You know, whether we think it's necessary to put, well, pulling in the ATM would mean summer. I don't think we want to do that. So if October is the timeframe, and if that's the right topic, you know, helping to steer, what's the context of that, the dialogue at that point in time in the process? And they have an active Board Buddies program where each one is distributed around to the different boards and commissions on a monthly basis. So, you know, that can be leveraged as far as the intersection between all the boards and commissions and that vision work as it flushes out. So if there's any comments or feedback I can take in the group next time. And otherwise, you know, we're just days away from election, May election. So whatever final appeals to your networks for passage of the Police Facility Bond.
Great, thank you. Our City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Adding to Council Martinez's report, there's also some language about that in the budget. The only thing I would add is that that has been vetted with the Fire Defense Board to ensure that that capacity and that capability is still available to the city and to neighboring municipalities as well. Further reminder, tomorrow night is the Budget Committee meeting. It will be at Light and Power, starting at 6 o'clock. So see you all again tomorrow night. Kudos to FIRE. On a different note, they've recently held, over the past year, 30 CPR classes, and we've graduated 225 students out of that program. Also, FIRE recently received a grant for $35,000 to help augment staffing for wildfire-type events. And so that will be beginning sometime after July 1st. The door counters have been repaired at the library, so you may have noticed in the last report that those statistics were not available for the past three months. That have been repaired, so you'll see that baseline reappear. If you've seen some crews around town trimming several large trees, that's Light and Power. They've identified some hazard trees. They recently had a hazard tree assessment, so they're pruning some of those back. Also, you may see Light and Power up on David Hill. They're taking some of that electrical conduit that was overhead on power lines, and we're burying that to try and reduce our fire hazard on the urban/wildfire interface there. So you'll see that going on up at David Hill. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'll start, you know, I just want to respond to Council Schimmel. I think maybe in June, when we talk about the 2040, when we have our next work session on the 2040 plan, I think we should, like, have a discussion about what's next and how we engage with the community in explaining the plan, because I actually think it's, even though we won't get the initial engagement right now that we're looking for, but having the finalized draft, the finalized plan, and then, you know, ranking those actions, I think that's a good, could be a good usage of an October ATM, because then we have our retreat in January. So it kind of primes the pump, right? Like, we get the community engagement now, we go through it, then we, I mean, because we all know that everything's a revision, everything's a, you know, you try to do better throughout it. So we'll have this plan, but we also want to continue the momentum of that community engagement. So I, for one, would be a fan of that, but think that it should be something we discuss at a work session. But anyways, okay, sorry, I'll go back to my report. So I attended, last week I attended, the superintendent's of Forest Grove School District has hosted a couple transition meetings where she invites community leaders, and, you know, kind of just gives an update about what's going on with the district. And so they are like many other organizations like ourselves, going through their budgets, you know, and their revenue is down, like enrollment is down. You know, there's some questions around federal funding. They have, I mean, I think the plan right now is there are going to be some budget cuts with the Forest Grove School District. However, I think they're going to be able to, they're really looking at a long-term approach to mitigate it. So it's not, I mean, you'll see some districts, and I'm not going to say names, but that, you know, are looking at cutting a lot of staff. And so they're looking at attrition, and hopefully, some of the retired, like, people who are retiring or leaving those positions won't get, there will be some cuts. But, you know, I think Dr. West struggles with the same things we struggle. It's like, really, how they want to get this message out to people, and they want community engagement, but like, how do we do that? And so there's a lot of opportunity. Bridget Cook from Adelante was there, calling our library, and Parks and Rec Directors were there. So, but then it was a really cool meeting, because afterwards, they took us on a tour of the high school. And it's so fun to, like, see kids. Like, so when you're talking, during the 2040 plan, we're talking about, you know, supporting employment for students. There's this mechatronics program, and the teacher, I'm going to totally give a shout, is John, his last name is Wors, John Wors. And they build robots and then have challenges every 10 minutes for the robot to win. But like, there's, Dr. West was explaining, and I'm kind of geeking out because I'm a teacher as well, but like, the number-one factor that influences, like, success, student success, is the teacher efficacy, right? That the teacher thinks like they, that they're part of, and this guy was it. Like, he was like, just so fun, so much energy, and the kids were like building and yelling and like working and creating and constructing. It was, that was, I mean, it is sometimes, May budget seasons are hard. And then to finish that meeting with, that visit was very, very cool. So anyways, if you ever get a chance to go see the mechatronics in the high school, you should do it. Plus, they also have like a, never mind. But they are selling food at the high school with their bull and everything. Like, you can buy, I was like, I need to work here so I can buy my little box lunch. But, okay. Going back to budgets, Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting was today, and, you know, the county did, we actually, the mayor plus chair meeting was canceled today because they're having a budget meeting, but obviously, we're having a council meeting, so I did not attend. But the proposed reduction, the actual dollar amount, the decrease to MSTIP that they're proposing is going to be $5.5 million decrease. So that affects us. I mean, we've had a few really good projects in the last few years. Martin Road is a MSTIP project. Fortunately, 47 Maple and Fern Hill is like obligated, so that will happen. But that's, so now, so then the other part of our meeting was like, how do we, because the right, I mean, this has happened the last few years, that they've cut MSTIP, or MSTIP, however you want to say it. And so they're looking at creating a group and exploring other options for transportation funding to create like more resiliency within that department. So I will keep you updated with that. The delegation to New Zen is being planned, and I think that we go over there July 1st through the 8th is the scheduled time to go. So that will be good. Oh, back to WCCC. There's, they're just recommending that we provide testimony on Senate Bill 974, which is changes permitting timelines and enforcement. And then there hasn't been a transportation bill yet, but just like, you know, once it's released, give testimony, because those are going to impact our budgets. I think that's all I'm going to report on. I'm trying to think. Oh, wait, I just want to remind the council, too, that our next meeting is on a Tuesday. It's May 27th, the day after Memorial Day, because it's a holiday. So, and I'm going to adjourn, oh, I'm going to read this before I adjourn. Executive, we're going to go to executive session after this. Executive sessions are closed to the public. No formal decisions or actions will be taken. Representatives of the news media may attend, but may not disclose any information discussed. News media representatives can request a link to attend via Zoom by emailing the City Recorder's office at mwoods@forestgrove-or.gov. Okay, the City Council convened to hold executive session ORS 192.6602I to review and evaluate the employment-related performance of the City Manager. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.